Rise. If we can have a moment of silence to keep our voices clear, all our military, our armed forces, and all our persons who are on the move that they will be turned on safe. Thank you. Pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America, this is a republic for which it stands, one nation, united in this whole liberty and justice for all.
... provisions that the Muslim community will publish in the home of its people for your citizens, for our communities, for the Middlesex County public, as well as on the voting board in the Middlesex County District Building in these forty-eight hours and events of the meeting itself.
All call.
County Commissioner Asra Barbe here. County Commissioner Kenny.
Yes.
County Commissioner Coppel. Here. County Commissioner McCollum.
Here.
County Commissioner Naren. Here. County Commissioner Maris.
Here.
County Commissioner Director Rios.
Here.
I have recognition.
Uh, President of the United States of America, January is Muslim Heritage Month, and recognition for Mayor Peter A. Gant.
Is there a motion to adopt a law of recognition? Two. For call.
County Commissioner Asra Barbe.
Yes.
County Commissioner Kenny. County Commissioner Coppel.
Yes.
County Commissioner McCollum.
Yes.
County Commissioner Naren.
Yes.
County Commissioner Maris. County Commissioner Director Rios.
Yes. At this time, I understand we have some members of the Muslim community that would have offered to come up here and join me by the podium. You could come over here.
Okay, we have a resolution here recognizing the, uh, make, and recognizing the month of January as Muslim Heritage Month. And we're just, you know, making awareness that the Muslim community has made significant achievements that have directly contributed to the positive growth and diversity in Middlesex County, uh, as far as, uh, education, music, government, medicine, philosophy, mathematics, li- literature, culinary culture, architecture, arts, and, and, and so much more. And it's essential to promote awareness of the invaluable contributions of the Muslim community to combat injustice, anti-Muslim hate, and Islamophobia. And where, uh, whereas the Muslim communities, or the Muslims are the world's second-largest religious population with approximately two billion followers, and three percent of them reside right here in New Brunswick. And we always want to promote that everybody is equal, and that everybody has a fair chance, and that there's no room for hate anywhere in Middlesex County, and God willing, someday it would be no hate in the United States of America or anywhere else for that matter. So we just want to recognize them and, and, and let them know that we are here with you. We're fellow citizens, fellow family, and we're forced, where they, uh, always foster peace, prosperity, and kindness amongst all our communities. I just want to congratulate them all, and thank you for coming here.
Is everybody in the picture? At?
Yep.
So, one, two, three. Thank you. Does anybody want to make any comments?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Assalamu alaikum. My name is Asra Baig, and I'm a resident of South Brunswick here in Middlesex County. And, um, on behalf of the New Jersey Muslim Heritage Month Coalition, would like to thank all the commissioners, uh, Director Rios, Deputy Director Santi Dara, and all the commissioners. Um, I think we've, uh, crossed paths here and there, and I've known, um, Deputy Director Santi Dara for at least a decade, and, um, just wanted to give my, our gratitude, uh, for recognizing January as Muslim Heritage Month. And also, thank you to everyone from the community that has come out on this, uh, wintry, uh, evening, and, uh, you know, we wear the, uh, snow and cold, but, uh, there's a lot of people here from the community, from different parts of, uh, Middlesex County, Tiscataway, Old Bridge, um, Edison, um, Rupper Student, and, uh, other, um, uh, parts of Middlesex County. So, thank you for coming out, and, uh, you know, uh, there's so many, um, people in Middlesex County that, uh, are very accomplished, and, uh, we, we have mayors, uh, Mayor Iman Al Badawi, we have council members, there are Rashi, we have, uh, multiple school board members, uh, from different, uh, towns of, uh, Middlesex County, and, you know, we have lawyers, educators, nurses, doctors, engineers, entrepreneurs, we're a, a rich part of, uh, the culture here in, uh, Middlesex County, and, uh, we appreciate, uh, you recognizing this month. I know last week, uh, Edison, in Edison at the NJ Expo Center, um, several thousand people came to, uh, celebrate and recognize the month of January as Muslim Heritage Month. There is events all across the state of New Jersey, and, um, libraries are having events, there's different festivals, various proclamations and resolutions, but I believe Edison had the largest, um, celebration, and hopefully we can see you all there, uh, uh, next year. And, uh, now I want to introduce, um, Malika, she'll be, uh, talking a little bit about the Muslim Heritage Month, and she's a resident of Highland Park, she's involved, civically engaged, um, has run voter registrations, and, um, is involved in DEI, so without further ado. Thank you.
Thank you, everybody. Good evening. Esteemed members of the county, I wish to ask you a question. Being, uh, simple, you know, uh, step on one, I'm not very used to public speaking, so we will apologize to you for that, uh, but, um, I would like to start with, uh, the name of, uh, who is one who sees everything, which is, uh, one area here. Thank you, residents of, uh, Middlesex County, I want to, uh, express my appreciation for, uh, support, and thank you all for recognizing Muslim Heritage Month. This special occasion is a testament to the contributions of Muslim Americans, both native and immigrant, uh, who have been on this land for now almost five hundred years. The rich fabric of our society is announced in the June Resolution Number Six, signed by our governor, Phil Murphy, on April twenty-nine, twenty-three, uh, designated January as Muslim Heritage Month. Middlesex County is one of the, as we all know, is one of the oldest counties in New Jersey, and again, that was expressed in the foresight and under it, the Muslim American community. From its founding in sixteen eighty-three to today, Middlesex has embraced diverse cultures, including Muslims from around the world who have shaped the countries and the coun- county's economy, education, and culture. Grandford University, the eighth oldest institution of high learning in the U.S., is, uh, home to a sizable Muslim student population, uh, illustrating our local communities' outgoing contributions. Middlesex County also has a rich history of resilience, where Muslim immigrants build strong, family-centered communities here, from the early battles of the American Revolution right here in, uh, Edison and the neighborhoods, and then, uh, we had the first, uh, New Jersey parliamentary, uh, uh, fourth here, uh, in New Brunswick. Yes. Uh, so, uh, and then to the post, you know, World War I and World War II era, when a larger number of Muslim immigrants came here. Middlesex ranks seventh in the state in, as median income, and actually part in hard working contributions of Muslim Americans who have excelled in fields like healthcare, finance, media, and the global market. However, we also face challenges. You know, despite our joint success, there have been incidents of our domestic abuse more we have in recent years, and Middlesex County has taken proactive steps such as bias training and educational initiatives to address these issues and promote mutual respect, which is highly appreciated. Muslim Americans who represent a growing demographic are engaged in shaping the future of our state, advocating for policies that promote equality and within sustainability. As we celebrate Muslim Heritage Month, we would like to urge all to recognize the importance of our standing and appreciating the contributions of Muslim Americans. As a representative of the Muslim Heritage Month Coalition and resident of the county, I'd like to express my gratitude for the support of all people present here, uh, supporter of the Muslim Heritage Month Coalition members and partners, Muslim American organizations, Muslim Americans for the Muslim School Democracy, NJ Muslim Voice for Progress, Muslim League of Voters, ISPU, MPG, and every single one of you that visit Middlesex County and all of our allies across New Jersey who work tirelessly with this, you know, recognition, uh, resolution, and, uh, Middlesex County Board and Commissioners for adopting, supporting it, and supporting this very important historic initiative. Together, we shall build a stronger, more inclusive community for all. Thank you.
You don't have to s- You don't have to stay for the rest of the meeting if you don't want.
Thank you.
We won't hold you. I love Madison, Dan, here. Okay, we have more respondents.
My parents were provided with the first fund. Thank you for the funds.
Motion to accept the first funds. Favor. Motion to cast the chairman's nominee.
The regular meeting held on Thursday, December nineteenth, twenty-twenty-four, at six-thirty P.M. The rest of the meeting held on Monday, December thirtieth, twenty-twenty-eight, at six o'clock P.M. And the regular meeting held on Sunday, five-hundred-seven, twenty-twenty-five, at five-thirty. County Commissioner Barbe.
Yes.
County Commissioner Kenny.
County Commissioner Coppel.
County Commissioner McCollum. County Commissioner Naren.
Yes.
County Commissioner Maris.
Yes.
County Commissioner Director Rios.
The president's commissioners, Commissioner Shannell Scott McCallum.
I thank you, Director Rios. NJ Safe is an online application to help low-income individuals and individuals with disabilities check for savings and assistance programs. NJ Safe is an online application to help low-income older adults and individuals with disabilities save money on Medicare, premiums, prescription costs, and other living expenses. NJ Safe navigators are available through the two agencies in Middlesex County. To learn about NJ Safe, visit the Office of Agent and Safe Services webpage in the county website. The annual point in time count of all homeless individuals and families will take place on Wednesday, January twenty-ninth. Data from the county is used to help identify needs and system gaps. It also allows individuals to make suggestions on how resources can be allocated. The January twenty-four point in time count documents six hundred and nineteen homeless individuals is six percent less than the January twenty-twenty-three. The twenty-twenty-five numbers will be available later this year, and that will be my goal, Director Rios.
Thank you. Commissioner Shannell Kenny.
Thank you, Director. Just, uh, the call for two C eighty-four over Southwood Nav, the Battle of Tributary in South Plainfield was recently completed. Uh, there was the inclusion of sidewalks, AD grants, radical project tunnels, and it provides for a safer pedestrian walkway through this busy quarter, and approved refuge for patrons of the Jersey Transit. There's also some slow stabilization methods supplemented, but newly constructed inlets, storm sword pipes that'll help the road, yeah, prevent erosion and undermining of the road, um, in the future. But I thank the engineering and, uh, all the departments that are involved in that, and I also just want to, uh, thank the Public Works Department and anybody else who's involved in keeping our roads, um, safe during the storms that we've had, the snow and freezing rain, uh, with the brining, and I don't know if we did plow it, but if we did, uh, they always do a great job, and I just want to say thank you. That's all, Director.
Thank you. Commissioner Melissa Coppel.
Thank you, Director. In twenty-fourteen, Middlesex County became the first county ever in the state of New Jersey to adopt a debt service and surplus fund policy. Last over ten years, both policies remain intact and have resulted in billions of dollars in savings to taxpayers. Twenty-twenty-five will mark over ten years of decreased annual debt service payments, particularly from twenty-four, twenty-twenty-four to twenty-twenty-five, Middlesex will see a decrease of zero to thirty-two point seven million dollars. Surplus also shows consistency and a positive growth pattern over ten years. Budget year twenty-twenty-four was close with a surplus level of one hundred and thirteen million, an increase from the prior year of six point two million dollars. This increase achieves a surplus-to-budget ratio of nineteen point five percent, a value that is highly coveted by bond-grading agencies. The ability over long term to consistently decrease annual debt service payments and grow surplus is a clear indication that Middlesex County finances are being effectively managed. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Commissioner Chanel Scott McDonald.
Yes, thank you, Director. Leading everyone from the Office of Workforce and Career Development, in collaboration with RWJ and Middlesex College, we're having a career expo on Wednesday, February twelfth, from ten A.M. to twelve P.M. at Middlesex College in West Hall. This event will feature direct hiring opportunities for a variety of healthcare positions, professional development presentations, and insights into how to get started in the healthcare occupation. You'll have the opportunity to connect directly with hiring managers from their respective departments at RWJ Marcus Health, learn golf free healthcare training programs with state-recognized certification, available for eligible residents. Hear from RWJ Marcus Health professionals who will share valuable insights on high demand roles and provide information on career programs offered by Middlesex College to help me transition directly into employment with RWJ Marcus Hospital. And please don't forget to bring your resume to the event. Director, that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Deputy Director Shanty Harris.
Thank you, Director. Uh, from the Middlesex County Sheriff's Office, uh, the Sheriff's Office is offering free car seat safety clinics. If your child's car seat installed correctly, join the Middlesex County Sheriff's Office for a free car seat safety clinic, where certified child passenger safety technicians will inspect your car seat and demonstrate how to install it properly, provide hands-on education, and the proper use of car seats and boosters, and share valuable information about child passenger safety laws and guidelines. For dates and more information, please visit middlesexcountynj.gov backslash car seat. And in addition, free car seat inspections are available by appointment during weekdays at Middlesex County Sheriff's Office located at seven oh-one Livingston Avenue, New Brunswick, from eight A.M. to two P.M. Please contact Brittany Brodniak at seven-three-two-seven-four-five-three-three-seven-five, or email brittany.brodniak, I'll spell it, B-R-O-D-N-I-A-K, at co.middlesex nj.us to schedule an appointment. And just remember, these, uh, car seats and booster seats are only as effective if they're utilized properly, so let's all work together to keep our infants and our young children safe and secure. From the bureaus of solid waste environmental recycling, in twenty-twenty-four, our divisions held seventeen events for our, uh, residents. The year's totals were, for household hazardous waste, total number of events, five, total number of three thousand six hundred and one residents participated in these programs, and a total of three hundred and twenty-seven thousand one hundred and ninety-four pounds of material was collected. For paper shredding programs, we held eleven of them throughout the county, I'm sorry, twelve, throughout the county. A total of five thousand five hundred and ninety-five residents participated in these programs, and a total of two hundred and forty-one thousand three hundred and sixty pounds of material were collected. And in the upcoming weeks, the divisions will be advertising its, uh, twenty-twenty-five schedule, so please be up on the lookout. I know, uh, many of our residents, uh, utilize these events, and I hope many more, uh, will do so in the future. And last, I know we're expecting some bad weather next week, how much I don't know, but, uh, please, everybody, stay safe out there, and, and just know that, um, our Office of Emergency Management, as well as our county staff, uh, and all the relevant departments will be out there to, to keep the streets safe, and we ask you to proceed cautiously. And that's all I have. Thank you, Director.
Thank you.
Commissioner Shannell, thank you, Director. I'd like to start off by thanking all who came out for twenty-twenty-four and volunteered their time for Middlesex County Conservation Board. Throughout the year, almost a fat part, throughout the year, volunteers collected more than twelve thousand pounds of litter, and planted trees, shrubs, native wildflowers, while removing invasive plant species from any of our county parks and open spaces. In twenty-twenty-four, almost a thousand people volunteered their time, expolled nearly three thousand hours. Check out our park's website and more information on our next volunteer events, so you can come and join us in twenty-twenty-five. Roosevelt Family Ice Cream, if you're starting, if you're starting to feel little cabin figures come out and join the family ice cream for some outdoor fun, or looking beautiful, Roosevelt Park Link. Enjoy the fresh crisp air while skating, uh, for pleasure, during our open skating sessions and while ice, while taking ice skating lessons. The next round of lessons starts Sunday, or sign up now. Information is out the ring, including the hours, pricing, can be found on our website. I know some of you are already making plans for the warmer weather of spring and summer, so I wanted to let you know that our park's office will start taking big thing reservations for twenty-twenty-five season, February fourth. All reservations are being done on electronic reservation system, so head to our website to find more information. That should be reserved at your, your, Matt, Roosevelt.
Thank you. I would just like to also echo, um, my colleagues that, um, bad weather is here, cold weather's here, and I just advise people to be careful even walking, let alone driving, with everyone's driving, please drive with caution, the roads can get slippery, you may see black, may not realize that there may be black ice, and which could create an accident. And I'd also like to, uh, warn people that there's a lot of scams going around, it seems like it's escalating lately, with, uh, computers, emails, people may be getting emails stating that they're from Amazon, or from Comcast, or Verizon, and they give you that link to click on, click on, and I would recommend you not, uh, click on that link that they give you if you have a question, you're not sure, call directly the company, Amazon, Verizon, Comcast, whatever the company may be that somebody's trying to target you. That's the safest way so you don't get scammed and information gets compromised. Okay, Mr. Kelso, any resolutions to be added?
None.
Any resolutions to be amended?
None.
Anything to be noted?
None.
Any resolutions to be forwarded?
None.
Just to kind of open up the meeting to the public, any comments, uh, resolutions listed only, and state your name and address, and you have five minutes.
Good evening, Commissioners, Charlie Pratt, the one four-three sedan, New Brunswick, uh, start of the first A.M. twenty-five twenty. And I want to be clear, this is a professional services contract for Mr. Kelso's firm. He is salaried employee with the county, uh, making in excess of two hundred thousand dollar salary, or the our governor, and the county, for some reason, sees fit to also hire his firm to, I guess, supplement his services here, and I wanted to ask, uh, why is this? Do you not see this as a, uh, ethical problem?
We've had Mr. Kelso and his firm for years array, his firm has always had him, always acted professionally, there has not been an instance where anyone else, Commissioners here, have, uh, second guessed this question, his comments, his legal advice, so we're happy with his, uh, service that he provides to Middlesex County.
And I just want to be clear, this was not, uh, done through a public bidding process, this was just a unilateral action?
It's a service that's allowable by the law.
Right, so just to be clear, this unilateral action?
It's a service. Right. It is publicly advertised. Okay. Fair enough process.
Okay, and, uh, I guess is there a not-to-exceed amount? Is there any kind of cap on how much funds could be, uh, spent on this firm?
You never know what's gonna happen throughout the year, that you may have to have more mitigation or representation for mitigation, that people may sue an asset for whatever case may be, so you can't really put a cap on it.
But you can, you can legally write.
Narrowly cases, it's a narrowly rate, until, like.
Right, unlimited amount. So, no limit on the amount, right?
No limit on the amount, no, just the O.
Right, so it is possible, um, you know, correct me if I'm wrong, Commissioner Director, but you could set a not-to-exceed amount, and then, if you're in danger of exceeding the amount, you could pass another resolution to change the not-to-exceed amount, am I wrong? Is that not an option? Why are, why, it, it would have to be a best practice, a best financial practice, to put some kind of cap on it?
I answered your question, Mr. Pratt. I answered your question, that's sufficient, okay?
Okay, well, you did not answer the question that I just, yeah.
I had an issue with Mr. Kelso personally, and it's, it is, it's so successful and professional throughout the years, many years, and what happened to this?
Sorry. So, again, correct me if I'm wrong, but you clearly put a not-to-exceed amount on it, not yet.
I answered your question.
You did not. For the record. But we can move on. Twenty-five, twenty-five, planning board, uh, you're putting yourself on the planning board, putting Mr. Kenny on the planning board again. I was at the meeting this week, and, uh, was disappointed that I didn't see either of you there. I know you missed the vast majority of the meetings last year, the year before, the year before that, um, why, why weren't you there at the most recent meeting, and why don't you, if you're not gonna attend the majority of the meetings, why don't you appoint a different Commissioner who will?
First of all, I don't miss the meetings by design. I have maybe a conflict where I had one of the scheduled meetings, and for their information, this past meeting, I was at the state-of-the-state address that the governor gave, that, because I was invited by the governor to, and I felt that it was my obligation to represent Middlesex County at the State House when the governor gives a state-of-the-state address.
Certainly the title to your opinion, I think your obligation was to do the planning board, where you hold a seat on the board of voting member, and I would rather you, uh, attend that, um, meeting.
We have, we have, uh, alternates that go in place when a member cannot make it. If for some reason that the, the planning board meeting was in jeopardy of having a quorum, and then I would have, uh, redacted, I'm going to Trenton and make the planning board meeting.
Okay, and then one oh-two is a big open space purchase, one point four-five million dollars, on, uh, I guess, uh, grant agreement with township Monroe. Can you tell me what this is, and was this vetted by the Open Space Advisory Committee? Is that, uh, body active?
Well, just like every other town that comes in for a open space grant, you know, the county staff and professionals go through the process, just like every other town has to go through the process of the application part, and see if it's a worthwhile investment, and how it can help, when, when, you know, the community comes to us and asks for help, uh, and we think that it's a worthwhile cause for open space, we're open-minded.
I'm done.
Thank you. Good to be open-minded. Anyone else in the public? Need to vote for a person?
Second.
Vote for favor?
Nine.
opposed? Opposed, the chapter? Okay, does any Commissioner have to go on anything separate?
Director, one-five dash nine-one.
Director, 25-91R.
Anyone else?
25-74-R, related to crack.
Anyone else? Okay, Mr. Kelso.
Director, a motion to adjourn to adopt a consent agenda, consent resolution number 25-20 to the resolution 25-140, excluding resolutions 25-91 and 25-740.
Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? Motion to adjourn? Call for?
County Commissioner Ashbo de Barber?
Yes.
County Commissioner Kenny?
Yes.
County Commissioner Cottle?
Yes.
County Commissioner Dar?
Yes.
County Commissioner Tamaro?
Yes.
County Commissioner Director?
Yes. Now, Director, would be appropriate to consider the resolution excluded by Commissioner Cottle, and that's the resolution 25-90.
Motion to adopt?
Second.
Call for?
County Commissioner Ashbo de Barber? Yes. County Commissioner Kenny? County Commissioner Russell? County Commissioner Cottle?
Present and not voting.
County Commissioner Dar?
Yes.
County Commissioner Tamaro? County Commissioner Director?
Yes. Now, finally, Director, would be appropriate to consider the resolution excluded by Deputy Director Dar, and that's the resolution 25-70.
Is there a motion to adopt?
Second.
Call for? County Commissioner Ashbo de Barber? Yes. County Commissioner Kenny? County Commissioner Cottle?
Yes.
County Commissioner Cottle?
Yes.
County Commissioner Dar?
Present and not voting.
County Commissioner Tamaro?
Yes.
County Commissioner Director?
Yes. This time I open up the meeting to the public. Please state your name and address, and you have five minutes.
Good evening, once again, Charlie Cradell, New Brunswick, New Brunswick. Today, I know you've been suppressing the public's ability to speak at the past couple of meetings, so I haven't had a chance to bring this up. But I did want to follow up and thank Melissa for getting back to me about Code Blue. And I want to clear the, you know, clear this up and clarify that they have 20 beds at Code Blue, but their capacity is 27, because I guess, you know, if seven more people show up, they'll let them sleep in a chair at the New Brunswick Warming Center. And so I just wanted to clear that up. There is no second location, though. So if they get above 27 people, which I think the point in time count is gonna find that we've got a lot more people without homes in New Brunswick, that the capacity of the single warming center is not sufficient to meet the need if everybody tries to take them up on that. And I do, again, want to thank you for your work on that. I'm pleased that there's other towns that will finally be doing a Code Blue Warming Center. And just want to encourage you to look holistically at what we're doing and try to expand it, because the reality is, I live in the neighborhood where the Warming Center is. And I was there at 6 p.m. tonight, so they just opened for the night at 7. There were people waiting outside at 6 p.m. in the freezing cold, presumably for an hour now before they could get in. So I think that you should look at what other counties do. I think other counties do a better job of offering more beds, more hours, and New Brunswick is the place where we need it the most. So I hope we can get a second Warming Center, if not this season, by next season. Encourage you to look into it and think holistically about how we can do better.
And just for the record, Mr. Cradell, we don't suppress anybody.
Did you allow general public comments at your reorg meeting?
We don't suppress anybody.
Did you allow general public comments at your reorg meeting? Did you? I watched it. You didn't. You used to.
Public comments, that's a resolution.
But you said, right, exactly. You suppressed the public comment, the public commenting on general matters, like the ones I'm about to bring up here. So the county government's been extraordinarily secretive over the years. They've used the pandemic as an excuse to abolish things like the Transportation Coordinating Committee and the Open Space Advisory Committee. I was trying to get to it in my remarks on resolutions. The Open Space Advisory Committee, that body's been abolished, right? Replaced with a secret process, is that correct?
There's no secret process. You just tried to skew.
Mr. Tamaro was on the advisory committee. Can you ask him when the last time the Open Space Advisory Committee had a meeting? Have you been meeting?
As we've mentioned in the past, you know, there's many vehicles in how to get public people into an open space request, and then coming to me. Finally, the Open Space Committee established a list ago, and so they built a purpose. During COVID, we realized that there were vehicles that could use, and they ensured that there's public input, any decisions of this commissioner would manage relative to the open space acquisition or regional agreements. As a result, that would not exist, but there are many areas of how the public comes back presents to this board, those requests across the 25 towns about what happens. And you also look at what you've done with the is relative to open space acquisition pursuit. Boy, Commissioner, the stellar record of open space.
And who made the decision to make that word not exist anymore? You abolished it, okay. So, yeah, that's a loss for the county to lose those two entities. I'm concerned about the secrecy surrounding your plans for a new office building in New Brunswick. Why are you trying to keep it a secret that you're working with AST Development to build a new home for the prosecutor's office and some other county agencies? Why the secrecy?
All of our continuing to have a good management, so deploying. As you know, we've got many office spaces throughout New Brunswick and other areas, which is quite expensive to the tax base of Middlesex County. So we continue to look at ways to bring greater efficiency in how we operate and day-to-day business. No secret to the fact that we have local, yet both the healers, this building, and also building upon New Street, to realign on workforce that better serves the public. There's no secret about it. It's a job that we do each and every day that ensures we reduce the cost of doing business to the townspeople.
Okay, well, I asked about it at this microphone previously. I didn't get a straight answer. And I think this gets back to the original resolution I was speaking about with Mr. Kelso. That developer is one of Mr. Kelso's clients, no? Also DevCo, another one of Mr. Kelso's clients. This is the nexus of the corruption. We can't have someone working for the public and private developers.
Is there a motion to close the public? Or is there a motion to close?
Second.
Oh, is there anybody else in the public? And before we close, I just want to say congratulations to Ed Gucci, who is now our new road supervisor in DPW. We have high expectations, and we really have a lot of confidence in him, and we wish him well in his new position. Good luck. A motion to close?
Second.
Call for favor?
Hi.
A motion to adjourn? Call for favor?
Hi.